Hi.
How are you?
Good.
How are you doing? You're on mute, Ash, I think. You're good now, yeah. How was your, how was your early decisions? Good?
I'm still waiting.
Still waiting?
Yeah.
I thought the fifteenth was, December was typically...
It's two more days.
Two more.
By the end of this week, it's mid-December.
Yeah, I know a lot of times we always use that fifteenth date as to kind of, you know...
Colleges have been very vague this year. They're just saying mid-December and then it's popping up at some point.
Well, I'm sure you're gonna, you're gonna get where you want to go, so...
Thank you.
Hi, Maya, how are you? I see you're up in the top right-hand corner.
Yash, I'm learning all about debate, how to be a debate judge. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah, you judged LD, right?
I did. I got thrown into varsity right away, which was...
That's good.
Really.
Did they talk really fast for you?
Oh, yeah. They did. The very first one, I had no idea what was going on for the first two minutes or so.
Yeah, it's, I, that's why I never did LD. I can't talk that fast.
They do this thing called spreading, where they speak as fast as physically possible.
They can go up to six hundred words a minute.
Yeah.
Which is insane. Rohit, who's the captain for LD, when you was, when he spreads, it sounds like a bee is buzzing and it's really funny.
I don't know.
You can't understand what's going on.
I don't know who can judge that. It's crazy.
Yeah. I've judged a couple of times and it just, my head hurt at the end of it, so...
Who are we waiting? Bad mouth LD. Sorry, Cecilia, she's watching.
Just Dan and...
It's lots of fun.
Jess.
Waiting for Dan.
And Jess.
Should I get started?
Yeah.
Yeah, you ready? I think Dan's gonna be here. Should I wait for Dan?
Give another...
A minute.
I sent out the recent...
It was hard to find the link. It was like, you sent it last Wednesday.
Yeah. I think...
Oh, now you just sent it, yeah.
There's a new one.
I had reset it just now. It usually was supposed to go every hour, but that setting may have changed, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. When you, someone asked, I realized.
There he is. Ready? Matt? Okay. Welcome, welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The Board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community join our meetings. The Board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The Board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We desire that our meetings provide useful opportunity for communication between the Board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required under the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 1046 at Sequenya. Adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton Packet and the Times on January ninth, two thousand and twenty, and distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy 2230 Recording Devices requires that we inform those attending this virtual Zoom meeting that the proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being livestreamed. The representative of the sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools as more specifically designated in NJSA 188388.1. In the event this statute is amended, the law should take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel action refer to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only. Votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Would you please take the role?
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Here.
Jess Deutsch.
Here.
Betsy Bagwell.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Present.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Present.
Daphna Kendall.
Here.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is item D1, Adoption of Minutes from the November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty meeting. Could I have a motion, please? Jess, a second. Brian, could we approve that by roll, please? If there's no discussion? Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Dan Dart.
Yes.
Jess Deutsch.
Yes.
Betsy Bagwell.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Hi.
Yes.
Daphna Kendall.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Minutes, motion passes.
Thank you. Next item is item E, Tribute to Departing Board Member. We are sad to say that this is, we're saying goodbye to our member Jess Deutsch tonight. It's her last meeting. I'm going to read a resolution that we have on the record and then we will have some, some comment on this. Whereas Jess Deutsch is leaving the Princeton Board of Ed after fulfilling three years of service, be it therefore resolved that the Board of Ed recognize the contributions that Jessica Deutsch has made to our district and its students and thank her for her time and effort, especially for her work in the following areas: Member of the Equity Committee, the Policy Committee, the Student Achievement Committee, Chairperson of the Policy Committee, and Representative Liaison to the Riverside PTO and the Princeton Education Foundation. So Jess, I think, I think there's a number of your colleagues who'd like to say a few words. Is there anyone who'd like to go first?
I'll break the silence. So I just wanted, Michelle, did you want to go first?
Sure. No, I'll follow you down.
Okay, okay. So I just wanted to say, one of the, one of the nice things about being on the Board of Education is getting to know people that you might not otherwise have met, and for me, Jess is one of those people. I've learned over the years, Jess is incredibly intelligent and her kindness and care for students just permeates in all of her thinking. She now has opportunity to work with Princeton students so directly, so they'll be able to take advantage of her gifts and she will be missed. So, good luck, Jess. It was nice getting to know you.
Jess and I have known each other for, for quite a long time because our daughters were friends and played field hockey together at PHS. And one of the things that I don't think I really knew about Jess over all these years is the level and intensity of her compassion for other people. Jess is a person who not only cares about the outside, but she cares deeply about the inside for all of our students. She was, he was a leading voice in the later school day. She's constantly reminding us about the importance of wellness and how that contributes to academic achievement. And she's, she's always thoughtful and remembers to express gratitude to people and to, and for the blessings that we have. So thank you, Jess, for that quality that you brought to this board and thank you for being a terrific and valued colleague. Good luck.
Debbie?
Yep. I do also want to thank Jess for bringing the whole gratitude idea to us and I look forward to us continuing that as we move on. And it, it does give you a little pause to say, you're right, there's all this crazy stuff, but we can, you know, really thank each other and move on. And I agree with Daphna. You and I would never have met and I think that's what's interesting about the Board. You know, we live like across, you know, Route 27, but it's so nice to meet different people and to see what they've brought to the school district, you know, with their family and children. And so I wish you a lot of luck and take care.
I'll, I'll jump in. Jess, I've always admired your steadfast focus on the experience of our students. So some of my colleagues have said this, from ensuring equitable opportunities for kids to a clear focus and lasting focus on students' health and wellness. Your contributions to this board and to this district are lasting and you will be missed, but I'm not sure you'll miss us on all these Tuesday evenings. So feel free to text us before a meeting and remind us that, that you have a free evening. So good luck, Jess, and thanks so much.
Brian?
Sure. This will build on what Michelle said. I've known Jess for close to fifteen years and she is amazing. Jess has spent her entire career focused on service to others, primarily in the field of education, but also social work. I'm not sure I've met anyone more committed to the health and wellness of children than Jess, and it was her passion for helping our pre-K to twelve learners and their families that called her to service on this board. I'd like to focus on one word that I think Jess most embodies, the word Michelle mentioned, compassion, which happens to have a very interesting etymology. Bear with me. The great Czech writer Milan Kundera wrote that linguistically, there are two different compassions. He observes that languages that derive from Latin form the word compassion by combining the prefix meaning with, come, and the root meaning suffering, pasio. Kundera posits that in languages that derive from Latin, compassion means we cannot look on coolly as others suffer or we sympathize with those who suffer. And he notes that linguistically, this compassion is close to another word, pity. He contrasts this with languages like Czech, Polish, German, and Swedish, where the with prefix is combined with a word that means feeling. So this compassion is really co-feeling. This is Jess's compassion and I think that's one of her greatest gifts and why so many people feel that her commitment to helping others is so heartfelt and genuine. Thank you, Jess, for deepening my understanding of compassion and for your commitment to helping others. It has been a privilege to work with you on this board.
Thank you all. Anyone else? Jess, would you like to say something? We're gonna open it up to the public, but maybe do you want to speak first or after that?
Gosh, well, I'd much rather listen to all of you than be speaking, as I hope you know about me by now, but I'll just make a brief statement if that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you, thank you, thank you. No one said that being on a Board of Education would be easy. It isn't and it shouldn't be. Often, it feels like you're stuck in a three-bear story on repeat. You spent too much, you didn't spend enough, you did that too early, you did it too late, you said too much, you didn't say enough. Very rarely do you get to the part where things are just right. The struggle, if it's focused on what is in the best interest of our kids and our community, is worthwhile and it's necessary. Excellence will exist in some places, no matter what anyone does. Disparity is a call for introspection and action on everyone's part. I am grateful for the opportunity to have been a part of this board. I think my favorite moment of service was the night that we honored Dorothy Mullen because her work, our school gardens, reflect the best in our district's values: joy and purpose, respect for teachers and students, and also wellness and a genuine, concrete version of equity, sometimes as simple as every kid tasting a new herb. I am excited for Jean Durbin to get to join you in service and I wish for all of you, the Board and the community, that you stay in the struggle with a focus on what matters, our kids, our schools, our community. I hope you keep pushing to define what you mean by equity, so that there's a chance to get there. I hope you will look harder at what is flawed in standardized tests and get away from the idea that something is missing in any kid. I wish for you the guideposts that Brene Brown offers in The Gifts of Imperfection, which are, this is kind of a long list, but it's worth reading, cultivating authenticity, compassion, resilience, gratitude, trust, creativity, play, rest, calm, meaning, and laughter. Whoever might be listening to us tonight, I hope you join me in holding our Board and our public officials to the highest standards, offering each other more compassion. We need to be on the same team on behalf of the kids who are counting on us and I hope you know that while I was on this board, I was well aware of my imperfection and sincerely motivated to contribute in the ways that I could. The work will continue and I thank you so much for the chance to have been a member of this board.
Thank you, Jess. Would you be so kind and share that with us so that we could read it and think about it and have it with us? Because I will say that ever since I met you, I think in connection with the Race to Nowhere that you organized, you have been, you have been kind of a mile, a marker for me and have kept me on the path. And, and I hope that, you know, our friendship and our relationship continues so that you can continue to be that kind of guide star because it's meant a lot to me and influenced everything that I do. So thank you. And we're gonna load up gratitude today in your honor and we're gonna keep doing it every week, every month if we can. We try to do it as much as possible. But before we do that, can we open up just, there might be a few members of the public who would like to just make a comment about Jess's departure?
Yeah, Darlene Sapien, if I pronounced that correctly, which I probably didn't.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. So I'm so glad to be here and I know that I only have a few minutes, but, you know, the six hundred words in a minute that Beth mentioned earlier, so I'm gonna try that right now. So I think I can sum up the amazing experiences working and living with Jess in the community in four quotes by Maya Angelou. The first quote that I thought about is, "If you don't like something, change it. If you can change it, change your attitude." Jess has been a role model in sharing herself fully, lending a listening ear and doing so constructively. She cares deeply about this community and contributes to a more inclusive Princeton in every way. Realizing that at times efforts can fall short, it takes more than individual effort, Jess sets herself apart in modeling a "let me roll up my sleeve and get to work" attitude. Yes, what I'm saying is that Jess thinks that we can work to be more loving, inclusive, and have more gratitude. I have personally benefited from her leadership in building bridges in carving our Princeton that feels right for me. I and many others are very thankful. Second quote, "Be a rainbow in somebody else's cloud." Jess always has a reason to share appreciation and has such a giving spirit. I would be remiss not to mention that during the upset of the pandemic, many of us experienced ambivalence and despair. It was so uplifting to wake up one morning to find a virtual community, gratitude now, a page to practice gratitude regardless of circumstances, oh, the repost. Third quote, "I have learned that making a living is not the same thing as making a life." Jess's omnipresence is inspiring. She's part of many committees in the university campus and student programming. You can find her in a small work coffee, walking down Prospect, the gym, and virtually everywhere. In all of these environments, Jess's heartfelt contributions makes a difference as she breathes life into every space. Last quote, "People will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." Jess, your energy, inquisitive mind, and genuine heart sets you apart. The Princeton community is better because of you. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for all that you are. You are loved.
Thank you, Darlene.
Thank you. Molly Markusman. Hold on. Molly?
Sorry, I was on mute. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
So I'm Molly Markusman and I'm the Director of Athletics at, at the university. I'm also a mother of three children, two of whom are currently students in the district and one at the high school and one at PUMS. And, you know, it's just, I, I was really thrilled to be able to ask to surprise Jess with a little cameo appearance tonight. This is fun to hear you guys talk about the work that she does on the Board because it's the same work that she does at the university. Darlene, you said that beautifully and I had a lot of things today to say, but maybe I'll cut some of it down because all of you have really captured Jess. I mean, Brian said she is amazing. I'll say the same thing. She is truly remarkable. And the students at Princeton, the student athletes at Princeton have, have the ability now to experience this care and compassion as Brian talked about. I could go on and on and on. And obviously Jess is super hardworking and competent and capable and successful and she's got great ideas with tremendous passion. But I think what you all have said and what I was gonna say is just, you know, what's so evident in her work at Princeton and as a school board member and, and honestly as a friend, is that she just cares so deeply. She cares about the people around her, about mission, about values, about purpose, and really just solving problems. So I'll just tell a really quick story that I think summarizes Jess. About six weeks or so ago, Jess reached out to, to me, just that she, she often does, to just ask how my daughter was doing and to tell me she was all in on a project we were working on and, and most importantly, asking how she could help. You know, she does that a lot, you know, after staff meetings, she gives me, you know, and I'm sure she does that to all of you. She gives me positive encouragement. She listens to the messages that I'm trying to share and then once again, always asks, you know, how can I help? And as you can imagine, when you're in big staff meetings, sometimes you're not sure anyone's actually listening. But Jess, Jess comes back and fills my tank and, you know, just, just tells me how we're on the right path and our, our values are right and our mission is right and we're making a difference. And that just motivates me to continue to do the work I do and I know that's what it does for our coaches, that's what it does for our student athletes. So, you know, she sent this text and those of you who know Jess know that she's, you know, let's just say, very thorough and very communicative. She sends a lot of emails and a lot of texts and sometimes I respond, sometimes I laugh and don't quite respond right then at that moment. But when she sent this one particular email at the right moment that just was something I really needed, it hit me, you know, just, just perfectly. And I just responded by telling her how amazingly valuable she was to our team and how much we all appreciate her enthusiasm and her just true goodness. And I may have made a little joke about not responding to her million emails, always telling me, you know, always letting me know how much, you know, or me just letting her know how much, I, I just wanted to let her know how much I loved her and had her, you know, had her back on our team. And of course, what she responded with in her very humble way was not, you know, thank you and appreciative she was, I know. She asked how my daughter was doing and then she said, did I send, do I send too many emails? And just again, in her simple, humble way of putting others for it and saying, instead of just, you know, really take, taking the compliment, she really turned it around and said, what can I do to be better? And we have, one of our values in the department is being growth-minded and you've all touched on that. And Jess is one of the most growth-minded people I know, just constantly trying to get better and trying to make those around her better. So we're thrilled that we have a little, I know, I mean, as, as a parent in the district, I'm, I'm so grateful for the work that she's done for our children. And then now I'm very grateful that she'll just continue to work on Tuesday nights for Princeton because that's what she does. So thanks, Jess, for representing us so beautifully and, and for being, as Brian said, truly amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Stankiewicz.
Good evening, everyone. It's really good to see everyone. And Jess, it's really wonderful to be here, just to tell you thank you. Thank you for, first of all, all the work you did before you were a Board member. You're a social warrior activist for the very simple but very powerful idea that our kids need balance in their lives, our staff, our teachers, all of us. And, and you battled for that and you brought that passion with you onto the Board and you made all of us better for being that, that warrior in that cause. And as I look at many other, what many other districts are doing right now, this is a, a time where we need your, your sense of gratitude, your sense of grace, and your sense of we're all in this together even more. So you've brought so much to the Board and to our community. I know you're gonna continue to bring that to the community, but I just wanted to say it was a real honor to be able to work together with you and I just wanted to say how thankful I am for, for what you've brought to us and into Princeton and to the kids of New Jersey. Thanks.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg. Anyone else out there? I don't see no one.
All right, well, there we go, Jess. Take it all in. We're all grateful to be able to give it.
I know everyone's like, oh my God, this is such a long night.
No, it's good. It's good. It's good for everyone. Thank you. We all need this. We all need to hear the good stuff. All right, so we'll move on then to the Student Board Members Report. You got Yash and Maya?
So hi, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Deutsch, for all of your work. I didn't get to know you that well, but from everything we've heard from previous liaisons and from the rest of these Board members, it sounds like you've done a lot of really good work and I'm sure everyone here is gonna miss you and that you left the Board much better than it was before you came on three years ago. So thank you for that. I hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving and if you're celebrating Hanukkah, you're also having Hanukkah right now. So today, Maya and I are really just gonna be talking about the things we've heard about, the mental health of our peers and like future plans about the new schedule and everything that's going on. And really just a lot of the things that we've been hearing from our peers about online school, now that we're reaching the midway point almost of the school year, which is kind of crazy to think of as a senior that I'm almost halfway through, through this year. So one of the really big things throughout this, the last few months is a lot of kids have been struggling and feeling really overwhelmed with the increased amount of work while also being virtual at least half the time or all the time. They've struggled, been struggling a lot with that. And so Maya and I are already working with Student Council, Dr. Donovan and the counselors at PHS to give as much help with them as possible. We went with Dr. Donovan about two weeks ago before Thanksgiving to help plan different events to increase student morale and just decrease people's stress about a lot of different things. And Maya and I will continue to report what we hear back from that. One of the big things is that people have just been, it's been very hard to acclimate to the idea of being on online school, a lot of, especially for a lot of high schoolers who've been used to just being in person, including me as a senior. I've been used to just being in school and doing work that way. So that's been very difficult for a lot of us. And then one of the really major things that I think as a Board and as a district we can talk about is the two different start times for the schedules between eight-twenty and nine-twenty-five, because that's been something a lot of people have been struggling with and something that I've been told a lot about from people. So that would be something that we can talk about in the future. And I'm assuming that Student Council has already been in conversations with Ms. Baxter and incoming Principal Mr. Warren about that. So that's also something that we're gonna be working on in the future. So like one of the major things with this eight-twenty to nine-twenty-five start time is that it's not giving us a, like, for a lot of us, because we're switching almost every two weeks now between those two different start times. It's essentially giving us, not allowing for us to set in a schedule that works, that's like stable for us, which has been a really big problem. And the second problem, which is, I think is already being dealt on, dealt with within the school, is just the workload. And teachers have been doing so much throughout the year and we really appreciate them for that. And that's also being something that's decreasing slowly over time and I'm sure that people are gonna acclimate to. And Maya's gonna pick up and do the second half of the report.
Hello, everyone. I hope everyone's staying safe and then also I think, except my gratitude to everyone who's working so hard to keep our school running smoothly. I, Yash covered a good portion of our initiatives, but I'm gonna briefly mention a few surveys and projects we're currently working on. This week, we plan to meet with Principal Baxter to discuss the results of our Stanford success survey from last year to properly address any mental health concerns with students. As Yash mentioned, we plan to work in tandem with Dr. Donovan and other counselors. Our guidance counselors have so graciously sent out a mental health check-in to all our students, which will be really helpful in providing more information on how we can help any students struggling during remote learning. We also have discussed providing, in addition to discussing providing more accessible resources for mental health, Yash and I have listed off dozens of possible activities we hope to offer to all students. And I've seen Student Council working on quite a few that I'm also very excited for this week. I was able to witness the joy of students from simply just coming together through one of these activities. It was a video game tournament and it was honestly really magical and I realized the importance of something as small as just, you know, just being together, even if it is through Zoom. And I'm so proud of all students across all grades that are working so hard to keep the spirit of PHS alive. In addition to our plans for mental health, through the Restored Justice Coalition, Yash and I have also had the opportunity to meet and discuss with students who are leaders in activism and social justice. who are leaders in activism and social justice, where, and we discuss more ways to apply restorative practice to our school policy and in order to foster more equity. This week, we are meeting with Dr. Tara Doty and having a study circle to discuss more ways about fostering a healthy school environment and community dialogue. And Yash and I plan to create polling and reports on our equity to address any of the concerns we discuss after going to a few more study circles. I believe that's it.
Thank you very much for that report. Are there any questions from the board? Thanks, you guys, for bringing us, you know, what's really going on. We appreciate hearing from you every month. It's important for us, our work. Next item is G1 harassment, intimidation and bullying. That's a consent item.
Um, you know what? I'm sorry, but we didn't go over that in closed session.
No, we didn't. We did not go over the, they're too unfounded, but we didn't go over them in closed session. Were there questions or do we need to go to closed session for that? Or can we approve them? It's not, it's not, it's not a, it's not a rule to go to have an executive session. There's only executive session if there are questions regarding the HIBs. So the question becomes, if there are questions, then we'll pull it and go to executive session to answer any questions.
There's no questions.
Well, I have, I don't want to do all that, so I can just abstain. And I don't think that won't make, that will allow it to go through unless anyone else is.
It's a consent item, so.
Oh, can we, can we, yeah.
It can make it action.
Yeah, make it action. And I'll just, yeah, I could bring up my concerns later.
That's fine. Matt, would you?
Right now, because it's.
So that's a, so we can have a motion for that. It's G1 harassment, intimidation, approving the consent. Can I have a motion, please? So we do this appropriately. Daphna, second. Dan, if there's no, any comment or discussion, we'll go call the roll on that.
All is to make it a consent, I mean, an action item.
Yeah.
We're going to vote on it as an action item because it's on the agenda, G1. Just, we can vote on it right away. So can we do that, Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
That's your bag with?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfield?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Susan Cantor?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Abstained.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So then the next item is just my, my report. I just want to thank everyone for attending the final monthly Board of Ed meeting of 2020. After a year of challenges that have turned the delivery of education on its head, a year full of hardship, sacrifice, innovation and courage, courage on the part of our students, our teachers, our staff, our families. I'm grateful to report that while much of what we do these days is virtual, the regular rhythms of running the district continue. Our board is fully engaged in first round interviews of superintendent candidates and pleased that our search has attracted highly qualified candidates. We will take our time in finding the right fit for PPS and for our community. We continue to target having a new superintendent start July 1, 2021. At the same time, our board is engaged in professional development with experienced facilitators from the Bucks County IU, working to improve our governance and effectiveness so that we are even more ready to build a strong relationship with our new superintendent and hit the ground running for our students in 2021. Tonight, in addition to ordinary business, we will hear about an exciting potential expansion of our pre-K program for three and four-year-olds. This time to provide one more classroom to be located at the Princeton Community Village, serving families right where they live. This will bring us to a total of six pre-K classrooms dedicated to giving our youngest learners the best possible start on their educational journey. Please note the link in tonight's agenda to the PPS holiday concerts, which are featured on the homepage of the district website. We hope that during this season, when many of us are feeling disconnected, that community members will enjoy the uplifting performances available there from our band, our choir, our orchestra and the drama students. We thank our fine arts educators for their extraordinary efforts in enabling our students to continue to express themselves through the arts despite pandemic constraints. Concerts are wonderful. I highly recommend listening and look forward to hearing the one that's coming next week, the holiday concert. Now, for one last important bit of gratitude for 2020. Words could never be enough to thank our teachers and our staff for all that they have done for our students this year. We would also like to acknowledge a few other individuals who have played no small part in ensuring that the learning and support of our students continued safely despite the pandemic. We'd like to just acknowledge our principals first.
Yes. Thank you so much to all our principals, Jessica Baxter, Jason Byrd, Denise Grouchoz, Mark Shelley, Louis Ramirez and Angela Ceso Stents.
And our assistant principals.
Thank you so much for our assistant principals, Rashawn Johnson, Jared Warren, Cecilia Burge, Tim Charleston and Stephanie DeCarlo. Thank you very much.
And our supervisors.
Thank you very much, Maridola Brijaj, Eric Zola, Christina Donovan, Brian Dubinsky, Keisha Smith Carrington, Elizabeth Muren, Stephanie Tidwell, Pat Lenahan, Crystal Riddick, Priscilla Russell and Stephanie Greenberg.
And our other senior staff and their teams. We can't say everyone's name. We don't have time, but we really are grateful to all of you. Donna Braden and the bus drivers and the transportation people, Valerie Elrich and our grant coordinator, David Harding, Director of Facilities, Susan McGreevy and Patty Gainor, who help us with administrative matters, and Elizabeth Collier on communications and all of the others. We can't mention everybody, but we are thinking of all of you and so grateful. And then last but not least, our senior staff and their teams. First of all, Mickey Crisafilly. You're on mute.
Sorry. Okay, so that's me. So tonight, we're thanking our administrators for successfully guiding the district through these unprecedented times. Mickey Crisafilly is our Director of Special Services and she's been kept super busy during the pandemic. First, of course, are her responsibilities to our 600 students receiving special education and related services. Not as well known is that Mickey has also been responsible for our coronavirus plans as well as overseeing the health and safety issues associated with opening school during a pandemic. Whether it's the contract tracing or the lengthy questionnaire that we all have to fill out every day before 7:30. Mickey's leadership has allowed us to open our schools safely this fall. To say Mickey's efforts were a success is an understatement. It's because of the health measures that were implemented that we have been able to open schools. And as far as I'm aware, we have not had one case of transmission of the virus in our schools. This is remarkable. With regard to special ed, the pandemic and the need for social distancing has caused a lot of issues as far as staff and students not being able to be in close contact for services such as occupational therapy and speech therapy. Mickey and her team, Eric Zolak, Beth Murn, Crystal Riddick, have worked tirelessly to ensure our kids are receiving what they need to help them during the pandemic. I'm especially grateful for the time they took, they all took to meet with special education parents to hear their concerns in several confidential Zooms. I would also like to take this time to thank two of our nurses who led, who are leading all the health coronavirus health issues. And that's Lisa Goldsmith and Liz Divich. They're not only working with the families of our 4,000 students, but they're also working with all our staff on a daily basis to ensure them that they're working in a safe environment. And finally, but most importantly, I'd just like to thank all the teachers and support staff. Our teachers showed up for kids this fall. There were no job actions or work stoppages as other districts saw. The caliber and commitment of our staff is what sets Princeton apart from other districts. And their work on behalf of our kids, while they rightly worried about their health, is to be commended and celebrated. Thank you.
Thank you, Daphna. Debbie?
Hi. Mike Bulby, who's head of HR. Mike entered the year 2020 still in his first year of employment in Princeton. Mike had a very busy 2020 even before COVID hit. He assisted the board in negotiating three union contracts. Mike revamped the annual non-tenure tenure review process. This was after he really listened to the personnel committee as to what we wanted and needed to hear about each candidate. This was his second non-tenure review in Princeton and the changes and clarifications made to the process gave the committee a much better understanding about our staff. Mike and the great HR department worked on CUSAC and passed many new job descriptions, six-period review, recruiting and hiring a more diverse staff, many new processes and procedures on personnel issues that will assist the district going forward, like matching aids to student needs. Mike supported the board's request due to COVID, which was not easy. The board is very grateful to you that all you have done to support all our staff. I'm sorry we're not having in-person meetings so we can see all your lovely holiday sweaters. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie. Brian?
Brian? Yeah, I'll answer the way Matt would prefer, which is just to say present. But he doesn't get off easy. I want to see him start to sweat. Beth asks for gratitude and brevity. I'm good with the first, but not so much with the second, especially for Matt, our great business administrator, who spends more time in Valley Road than any other member of the staff and whose work ethic, commitment to education and exemplary values are impressive. Matt really doesn't enjoy being complimented for doing his job and prefers to shift praise to his team. So I actually, in a surprise move, will be brief. As I said, Matt is hardworking and committed to education. He is also scrupulously honest, able to see and present the big picture while having command of the details, including more than 6,000 budget lines. And he shares our commitment to excellence, equity, transparency and ensuring that every dollar is spent efficiently. Thank you, Matt.
Matt. Betsy, we're going to give them all a big round at the end. Betsy?
Great. Well, I get to speak about Dr. Bob Ginsburg and I'm very happy to do so this evening. Many of us worked with Bob when he was the principal of Johnson Park. And we knew in that role that he cared very deeply about all of, all of his students. So since July 1st, as the Acting Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, we've seen that commitment on display for all of the students in our district. Bob has listened. He's responded to the many emails from student achievement members. And there are so many emails that we send Bob and he writes back. And he's worked to come up with his staff on creative solutions that work for all kids. So tonight, Bob, we heartily thank you for your ongoing dedication and your commitment to all students during this most challenging year. And I'd also like to take a moment to echo my colleagues' gratitude to our teachers and staff, of whom there are just too many of you to mention, or we would truly be here all night long. What seems to parents like magic is actually very hard work. And you're the reason students can't wait for when it's their day to go back or when they get to log on and see you on Zoom. So I just want to say thank you very much for your remarkable efforts each and every day.
Thank you all. Let's do a little round for our senior administrators and our teachers and everyone. This is kind of really nice that we can take time to do this. It's been a tough year. And, you know, we got a lot of work ahead of us and we'll go fast on the rest of the agenda. But this is a really important thing that we wanted to do tonight for you. And I think last but not least, we wanted to thank Dr. Barry Galasso, our interim superintendent. Michelle, did you have?
I have a very, I have a very few words. Because I know my colleagues are going to want to join in on this. Barry demonstrates the confidence that the challenge can be met, the need resolved and the crisis overcome. We talk a lot about fearless leaders. Dr. Barry Galasso is a fearless leader. If he's blinking or showing any weakness, he's not showing it to us. He came to us in July as an interim superintendent. And in the midst of the pandemic, he took the helm and he has provided us with steady hand throughout this summer and through the school year and continues to do so. We didn't know what to expect as a board and I suspect Barry had some surprises over the past few months as well. But he's led with courage. He's led with strength. He's led with imagination and creativity. And we owe him an enormous debt of gratitude for leading our school district, our excellent, wonderful school district that we all love and work so hard to keep running through this difficult time. He has really been the guy who's helped us and just been there for us. And we'll never be able to thank you enough, Barry Galasso.
You're here, Michelle. All right.
Well, if I could just add, you know, before we move on, so I also, everything Michelle said, so I won't repeat it, but also Barry has a great sense of humor. In fact, in closed session, we were talking about something and he goes, you know, people are cranky right now. And he goes, I'm cranky right now. And so when we look for self-awareness in a leader, you know, Barry has it. So you make it, you make it fun.
Thanks, Barry. We really hijacked your meeting tonight. We're almost done and then we'll. This is Jess, Jess gratitude extravaganza. So I just want to say the board's first meeting in 2021 will be our reorg on January 5th. And we will welcome Jean Durbin to join us. And I just want to thank my fellow board members for the privilege of serving as board president during this past year. And to Michelle Tuck-Ponder for the support and leadership she's shown to me and to the board as our vice president. And I look forward to working with all of my colleagues next year on behalf of our kids to do all the work that's to come. So thanks, everyone. And now Barry, we'll get to business.
Okay, great. Well, listen, first of all, let me say that it's been a pleasure to work with all of you. And I think I, the entire administrative staff is pleased to work with this board. We have not asked you for anything that you haven't done or approved for the purpose of getting these schools open and providing for kids. So when I first met you, I said that I think this, as individuals who, you had kids first and after seven months, you do have kids first. And I think as long as you do that, you're always going to be a premier school district. So I appreciate all the support and the administrative team that I'm working with is nothing less than outstanding. And as I said in my message to the community, our teachers and staff, every single day, have done some remarkable things. And tonight, we're going to highlight another remarkable thing. But the, it's just a pleasure to work with professionals who care. So thank you and we appreciate your kind comments. So, and I also wanted to say one other thing, you know, Beth, you mentioned that the board was doing work with the Bucks County Intermediate Unit. And, you know, I'd be remiss if I didn't share with the public, they probably work with 300 school districts a year. And for them to remark that the mission statement of the Princeton School District was such a unique and perfect, I think that was the word that they used, a perfect mission statement. And I know you all contributed to it, but I saw Jess's work in that too, as some of the writing, because she has done some editing for me over the course of seven months. So I wanted to mention that to the public because this is a group of people that work with boards from all over. And when they say, my God, this, your mission statement is unique, usually mission statements are just there. They saw yours as a living document and I think that's a tribute to the board and the community. So I wanted to mention that. As far as to the public, I just wanted to tell the people that are online about our scheduled readjustment and some of the thoughts behind it. We wanted to be sure that we get our young people in as much as we possibly can. We're one of four districts that are still holding live instruction in Mercer County. And tomorrow, we're going to bring in our little elementary guys for a half a day or actually a full four-hour day. And then we're not going to have synchronous instruction in the afternoon because I want to make sure the teachers get home safely before that three o'clock snowstorm hits. And depending upon the severity and the accuracy of our weather forecasters, if we receive six, eight, 10 inches of snow on Thursday, we probably will have a traditional snow day and not a remote day because I'll be concerned about connectivity from both the teacher's side and the student's side. If the weather forecast is wrong and it's a couple of inches of snow, we'll be all remote. And on Friday, we'll resume our normal in-person instruction. And then we will break for the holiday period until the 12th of January. I just want to say thank you again to not only our teachers, but our custodial staff, all of our instructional aides, our secretarial staff, people have done yeoman's work and have supported me in every single way. So I want to say thank you. And last but not least tonight, something really that I think we should do every month and we have is I want to bring attention to Judy Buckley and her studio art class. We're going to highlight three students' work. It's a four-minute video. It's Myla, Skylar, It's Myla, Skylar, and Violetta. And, you know, the supervisor of the fine arts program, Patrick Lenahan. And I have to give credit to Charlie Gallagher, who put this little segment together for us. So Coach Gallagher is not only a terrific coach, he's pretty, pretty skilled in putting these little vignettes together. So Matt, if you wouldn't mind playing this little four-minute video as we highlight Judy Buckley's studio art class. So my system got upgraded yesterday. So I will share this, but it's not going to record. So we'll have to post it. I'll post it on.
Okay, we'll post it on the website. Okay.
Hi, my name's Judy Buckley. I teach Studio Art 2D2, and I also teach studio art. I want to share with you some of the great work my studio art 2D2, the upper-level students did in their sketchbooks.
So like what I chose to explore was like, um, life, like human life in distortion. So like, um, like abstraction of human life. So instead of like drawing conventionally, tried to like, um, sort of like distort or present like a different image with drawings of people. And some varying degrees of success, but I'll show what that was about. Mesh parts of the body without presenting a person. It's more about a body than a person. But I, I really like this piece because I feel like it feels a certain way, just the, just the value and the line of it feels a certain way. Presents what I'm trying to, a little unsettling and like at the same time, I don't know. This is like an arm that I drew. And I had it sort of like, again, I like decided to like cut it. So I, like selected perspective, and then I put a, like a, basically like turned it into like branches at the top. I did that a bunch in like this section. It's about like, like life turning into other life.
This first one I did was me basically trying to test out using color for the first time to show somebody's skin tone. Because usually I use beige or I just don't use paint at all. So it was really interesting trying to capture the shadows using like blue instead of a darker. And then the next one, I tried to get a little more abstract. And again, the same thing, I don't think there's enough detail to this, but this one was portraying sadness. So I used like colors, blue and kind of like cool undertones to capture sadness. I was capturing boredom in this one. So I used no color to enhance like the color on this side, just the way it looks more like it, it's a bigger pop when you look at it. So it's like showing like how when you're bored, like all your creativity is just kind of like melting away.
I wanted to share with you the pages of my sketchbook. So this time around, I focused a lot on working and exploring watercolor, blending, mixing colors, playing around with the color wheel. For this first drawing, I was, I worked a lot with different mediums. So for this, I used marker and pencil and different shades of gray and how that like kind of collided with watercolor and then colored marker. For this one, I was playing a lot around with blending different colors and trying to come up with new shades of yellow, greens, blues, pinks. And then I used a Sharpie to create like a fun pattern on top like this. This one I had a lot of fun with because it's my name. I wanted to show something fun, like play around with color and shapes and stuff. And I liked how this one came out. It was, it was really fun to do. And one of my favorite ones that I did were, was actually like a set of three. So I did the same drawing, like the same little doodles with Sharpies. And then I played around with like diffusing the watercolor to create these three. So this one is like with green, this is red, this is blue. And I was really happy with how this one came out.
So hope you enjoy. I give these kids a lot of credit for the hard work they're doing in visual arts at home and some in school. And I hope they find meaning, creativity, and a feeling of expression in the work that they do.
Well, I want to thank Mrs. Buckley, and again, thanks Charlie Gallagher for putting this together for us and the three students. It's a tribute to the, the many talents that are exhibited, the kids at Princeton School District. They're just very, very talented and phenomenal kids. So every month, we're going to highlight at least one of our teachers and, and some of our kids showing some unique things that they're doing in school in this remote environment. So I want to thank them for that. So that's, that's my report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. I believe that brings us to the public forum, J1. If there are members of the public who would like to speak, if you could identify yourself, your name and your address. And we try to keep comments to three minutes. And I think Matt, Matt can select from the, raising your hand on the bottom of your screen.
Yes, Adam Beerman?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you. First, I want to kudos to Superintendent Glasgow. Great job. Just a quick comment on the new superintendent. I'm sure you've already considered this, but my humbly suggest possibly hiring a superintendent who's had over 10 years of superintendent experience with proven management and financial skills. And I think it's really important to have the gravitas to operate in a pretty high-performing school district with an engaged school community, i.e. someone, hopefully we have a basic understanding of the tribal creeds and customs of the Princeton Public School political ecosystem, which is true for any schools, you know, the particular way things are done and the personalities. And I thought, happy holidays and, and good luck in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin Munson?
Hi, can you hear me?
You can.
Hi, great, thanks. Kristin Munson, my son Luke goes to Riverside School. He's in the special ed program. I know I've been on here before, so some of this is going to sound familiar. First, I'd like to thank the board for everything that you all have done this past year, as well as the administration and Dr. Galasso. However, we are frustrated with the decision to go remote after this Friday. As I've mentioned before, special ed kids, including our son, have a very hard time and get very little educational experience remote. And the extended remote period is going to pose a significant challenge to the education that he receives. And I've asked before that the remote or not remote decision not be an all or nothing in that specific classes be accounted for. But again, this is, it's an all or nothing remote decision here. If nothing else, I think we'd like to ask that Monday and Tuesday next week, there doesn't seem to be a, an explanation as to why those days were turned in remote as well. If they could be an in-school, in-person day. And then if there also could be consideration for that week after the, the, the week of January 4th, for there to be consideration for some version of in-person schooling. We've seen this week how quickly there, a decision can be made that tomorrow, kids are going to school when it's normally a remote day. So I don't think it's too little, too short a time to make that decision for next week. And we just also heard that, to folks' understanding, there has been no instance of transmission within the schools. So I appreciate everybody's concern and considerations and efforts. But I think there are students that are not fully being counted for when we go remote.
Thank you. Anyone else out there? I don't see anyone, Beth.
Okay, that will take us on to the board committees. But I first have been reminded that we did not mention the name of Kristin Galian and our IT group and our tech group, who have done so much to support us during this time. So here's a shout out to our tech group, tagging on to the, the earlier ones. We don't want to leave anybody out. We're really just trying to do as much gratitude as we can tonight. Board committee highlights, first that we're going to start with equity, Michelle.
Okay, this is actually sort of difficult. First of all, the Equity Committee, the full committee meetings that we usually have on the second Monday at 7:00 PM, we canceled it. And basically because we had so many things going on with the board, but also because we've had a subcommittee that's been working on an equity impact policy for the past couple of months. And, and we were running into some challenges, and I'll try to keep this brief, running into some challenges about what that policy should say and, and how it should say that. So Stephanie Tidwell, who is our, our staff liaison, I have my own alarm on. And I met with Marceline DuBois, who has been our district's diversity consultant for, for the past couple of years. And we had a conversation with her about two things. One was whether we should make sure that any policy we have acknowledges what, I don't want to call it culpability, but I'll say what role the district has played in, in equity over the years. And so whether or not acknowledgement of that, stating that, being specific about how that's impacted people should be part of a preamble of our policy or the basis of our policy. And secondly, she talked about us resourcing appropriate language that talks about the value that all children bring to, to our schools. What we ended up having a conversation about at, at our committee meeting was, one, the need for data that, that we, and I know Betsy has talked about this a lot with student achievement, is that we don't really have the information we need to make good decisions. And we don't know whether or not it's being collected, or it has been collected, or whether it's been, it's all put together in one place. But it's very difficult to draft a policy when you don't know where you've been. And you don't want to, you know, re, what's past is prologue. You don't want to make the same mistakes again. So, so we had a conversation about that. We also talked about having a collective definition, definition of equity from the administrative side, from the board's side, from the student's side. What do all these different groups, what do they view as equity in their place in this, in this district? So we talked about working on, on gaining that definition. And that was also prompted by a conversation that I had with, of course, Jess, who is consistently always concerned about how we think about equity and how we achieve equity in our district. And we also talked about the accountabilities. How do we, without pointing fingers and without necessarily laying blame, but by acknowledging the role the districts has, has played in the lack of equity in our district, or the lack of, or, or the, the student achievement challenges that we've had? How have we played a role? And how can we make sure going forward that we go? So, you know, the challenge with equity is getting your arms around it. We've been listening to people talk about equity for two, for two whole years. We have 28 equity programs in our district, and we've really just got to get a handle on it and settle on a direction in terms of addressing the shortcomings that we experience in our district. So that was a long explanation of, these are things that we have to do. We'll explore them further at, you know, a future committee meeting. And I thank everybody over the years, over the, yeah, the two years who have come to our meetings, who've talked about inequity, who've talked about possible solutions, and the folks who have come to listen every week. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. There's no questions. We'll go to facilities.
Hi, we met on Monday, December 7th. I'd also like to thank Matt, Dave, and Barry, who facilitated and prepare so well for our meetings. And we have a small group of interested public that faithfully attends all our meetings. So we'd like to thank them for coming. Our committee was updated on the referendum projects. The small punch list for the elementary schools was expected to be finished that week. Pums was also scheduled to have the carrier rooftop unit put in as soon as parts arrive, although the actual unit itself is on premises at that time. And at PHS, a timeline is being finalized, which would move up the start of the guidance project to early 2021. At JP, the HVAC for next summer's work, preliminary submittals and permitting is underway, so that project is moving along. We were also updated on a roof audit being done by the district, which will be presented to the board. But it did uncover some repairs, which were, they were able to solve some longstanding leaks at PHS. A repair was also done to the Pums Pool HVAC. And a study is also being done on that HVAC for future work to be considered by the board. And then Little Brook HVAC, there was a noise issue with one of the units, but we believe that it's been corrected, but will, the district will be reassessing that moving forward to make sure the issue has been fully solved. And as we always do, we ended our meeting with sustainability. We discussed the timeline on building controls for the elementary schools, green, greener cleaning for our buildings in the future, future planning for potential solar panels, and the schedule that the district will undertake to install the direct, for the direct install projects, including LED lighting, hot water heaters, and some HVAC upgrades. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Finance, Brian?
Finance committee met on, okay, the finance committee met on Monday, December 7th with all members present. Our primary focus was to review the district's CAFER and AMR with our accountants from Whiston Company. And of course, we all know that's the Comprehensive Financial Annual Report and the Auditor's Management Report, which are two very important documents. The committee was very engaged and asked a lot of good questions, including whether the accountants had opinions on the size of our maintenance reserve funds, which we discussed, along with several other topics. There were no management notes, which is a good thing. And the accountants complimented Matt and his team for their work. In January or February, final versions of the two reports will be submitted to the full board for approval. Matt reported that direct, trackable COVID-related expenses were approaching $1.7 million. At our November meeting, he said that there are some savings from operating during COVID in transportation, fuel, field trips, and a modest reduction in fall EPIS positions. But he has not yet been able to attach a number to the savings, but said that overall, there would be a modest fraction of the added costs. Matt provided an update on the cranberry resource calculation, which uses the process Matt implemented last year. Matt also provided an update on health insurance, and there was some discussion about the new state plan. As it was being considered by the legislature and Senate, a main selling point was that there would be considerable savings in excess of $1 billion a year for employees and districts. Matt reported that early reports are that savings to districts appear to be very modest, and many are experiencing increases in costs. The committee discussed how important advocacy is to ensure that the state takes a leading role in controlling growth in healthcare costs, which pose a financial challenge for all districts. As this was our last committee meeting of the year, we expressed thanks to the members of the public who attend the meetings and to Matt and his team for getting a lot of good work done in a very challenging year. Thanks.
Thank you, Brian. That takes us to personnel. Debbie?
Hi, the Personnel Committee met last week. The Personnel Committee discussed the process to move forward with the principal search at PHS. The board will be approving a sick leave bank request tonight. We will also be approving the resignation of Jessica Baxter as PHS principal. I personally am very sorry to see her leave and see this is a huge loss to our PHS community. I also wanted to share that PPS is looking for substitutes. So everybody out there, if you're interested, please go to our website or call Mike. But we could use some more substitutes. Thank you.
Debbie? I will give a quick policy update. Peter asked me to, to do the report. The Policy Committee met on November 20th and went over the policies that are up. The Policy Committee met on November 20th and went over the policies that are up for first read on the, for tonight. And most of them were simply kind of updates or corrections that were requested by our administration. There is a procurement of child nutrition program, which is kind of required for that program to, to progress under the government requirements. We are looking at whether we should have an additional general procurement policy. The policy manual update has been, the turn of the policy manual from the old version to the new version has been completed. But Dr. Glosso, we have talked to NJASBA and asked them to complete the gender review of pronouns in the entire policy, and we continue to wait for that to be complete. But we will continue to follow up with them. And we discussed for future things that one of our board or multiple board members have asked about local procurement to, for us to be able to support local merchants. So we are looking into that and whether we can do some sort of resolution. And we will also be looking at a calendar of review for the policy manual, so that we do chunks all year long, different sections, so that we're continuing to look at that and keep it current. And it was also suggested that we consider next year having the Policy Committee also address issues of governance and advocacy, which now currently don't really live in any one of our committees. So that's it. Our next meeting is December 17th at 8:00 AM. And next is student achievement from Betsy.
Thank you very much. We actually haven't met in open session since the last meeting, but I'm never at a loss for words. So I'm just going to say a few words of thanks. We did meet briefly in closed session last Friday. I want to thank our committee, Debbie Bronfeld, Dan Dart, Susan Kanter, and Daphne Kendall, our devoted student achievement alternates, Beth Barron and Jess Deutsch, when they're called upon to help and sit in. I'm proud to work alongside all of my hardworking colleagues. I want to thank G. Ivana, Byzuski, and the Curriculum and Instruction Office for preparing our agendas. I want to thank Bob again and Annie Cusick before him, who helped shepherd us throughout 2020. And I also want to echo the, the thanks of my colleagues to the members of the public who so faithfully attend these meetings. We appreciate your input and we're glad that you are there. The committee does meet one more time in 2020, this Friday, at December 18th at 11:30. And the public is welcome and encouraged to attend. Thanks.
Thank you, Betsy. I think that's all we have in terms of committees for tonight. That takes us to Policies, L1. And that is a consent item. Is there any question there? And then we are going to go through, I'm going to go through all the consent items. I will read the, the titles and people can stop me if they have any questions. M1, Personnel Appointments. Two, Retirements. Three, Resignations. Yes, Daphna?
Um, so I'd just like to say that, so on the agenda for board acceptance tonight is acceptance of the resignation of Jessica Baxter as high school principal. And I just wanted to take a moment to wish Jessica well and just briefly highlight some of her contributions in the district. One highlight is the changes that resulted from the 2016 survey of the students at Princeton High School to gauge student stress and wellness. Jessica was instrumental in working with Stanford on their Challenge Success Program. Almost every student at Princeton High School was surveyed and the results of the survey showed need for change. Following the survey, it was clear that changes needed to be made for the wellbeing of our students. This included rotating block schedules to help ensure our kids were more engaged in what they were learning and a later start time at PHS. Those of us who have been around for a few years know that change comes very slowly in public education. But these dramatic changes were made under Jessica's leadership and they have been a success. So I just wanted to wish Jessica well. Thanks.
Betsy.
I would just like to do the same, although Jessica Daphna basically took a lot of the, the thunder from what I was going to say because we so often agree on, on these things, but your legacy will live on for our students and we appreciate very much the work you did for Princeton High School over the years.
That, that goes for, agreed. Thank you very much. Thanks for those comments. Jessica, you'll be missed. So that takes us to Item 4, Terminations. Transfer and Reassignments. Tuition Reimbursement. Personnel Items. Athletic Appointments. Pressa Aid Certification Stipend. Substitution Appointments. Leaves of Absence. Student Services. Curriculum Instruction. And then there's a settlement agreement, which is an action item. Can I have a motion, please? For approval of the settlement agreement, Brian, second. Michelle, thank you. Any discussion? If not, can we call a roll on that one?
Beth Barron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
No.
Dan Dart?
Yes.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Baglia?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Now we're on N1, which is the NJDOE Preschool Expansion Plan. I mentioned that in my remarks. I don't know, Dr. Glosso, if you wanted to say anything about that.
No, I'm just going to indicate that we should have some, some preliminary results by January.
It's an exciting thing. And two, Grand Application Amendment. And three, Educational Consultant Services. And, and four, Educational Consultant Services, Eric Malu. Five, Educational Consultants, Hill Pedagogy. O, Educational Placement. O2, Professional Consulting. O3, Special Ed Independent Educational Valuation. P1, Financial Reports. P2, Exceptions of Donation from Furmanich. I understand that they have now, Furmanich has donated to the Princeton Public Schools. Seven drums in total of hand sanitizer. I think they've done two more this year. Matt, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, there'd be nine in total. So originally they gave us six, but we, originally it was supposed to be two. So we're acknowledging them to get them up to date for a nine 55 gallon drums of World Health Organization blend of sanitizer.
We're very grateful for that local, local business and the support of the district. It makes a big difference. And they gave us the first batch when it was really in short supply and it made a lot of difference to us. So thank you.
Reverted to our doorstep.
That's amazing. P3, Emergent Purchases Above Bid Threshold. P4, Purchases of a bus. P5, Bus Safety Drills. P6, Extension Strategic Communications Council. And that brings us to the consent. Can I have a motion, please? Brian, second. Jess? All those, we're going to call the roll, please, on that.
Beth Barron?
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld?
Yes.
Dan Dart?
You're muted there.
Anne?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Jess Deutsch?
Yes.
Betsy Baglia?
Yes.
Brian McDonald?
Yes.
Michelle Tuck-Ponder?
Yes.
Daphne Kendall?
Yes.
Susan Kanter?
Yes.
Tentative passes.
Thank you. That brings us to our final public comment. If anyone would like to speak, raise your hand in the chat. Again, name and address, please, and keep it to three minutes.
I don't see any comments, Beth.
Okay. If there's no public comment, then that will, really, we're going to wrap up our meeting. I want to thank everyone for their participation tonight. Thank you for all the expressions of gratitude and recognition. It's kind of nice to end the year on that note. Even though it's been a tough year, everybody's done so much for, for the students, for the district, for the community. I'm just glad that we can try to acknowledge some of that. So thank you, everyone. If there's nothing more, I can ask for a motion to dismiss. Jess, second, to adjourn. Betsy, all those in favor of adjourning? I think motions pass. Thank you very much. Good night.
Hi, Jess.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Bye. Enjoy your Tuesdays.
She'll be tuning in.